Projects. We have an agenda that Matt has provided. Let me just pull that up.
I have a quick question. It just said this meeting is being recorded. Is there a way to access that later? I have a colleague who was wondering if he could watch this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we can circulate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Matt. Okay, Matt's got the agenda. Okay, great. So I think we should start. I will start with this welcome. I think let's just do some quick introductions and then we'll do a call to order. Why don't we start in Albany and then we'll make our way south in the conference rooms and then we'll just do folks on the call.
Starting in Albany, this is Jay Goodman for the City of New York.
Bill Hallmer, consultant at TDI.
Brother Benki DPS Council.
Did you hear all three of us, Josh?
We did. Thanks.
Perfect.
Maybe New Paltz is next, Heather. Jay, when you guys, can you guys mute when you're not talking, please? Or maybe Jim? Okay, Heather, can you introduce who's with you in New Paltz, please? Someone's got a really bad background here. I think it's coming out of the Albany office or the New York City office.
Okay, well, I'll do New Paltz. We should have fine audio here. Heather Gurlow, DEC. John Lipscomb.
John Lipscomb with Riverkeeper.
George Chasman, Riverkeeper.
Alex Wolf, Sanic Hudson.
Great, thank you. Going down the Hudson, I guess, New York City. Who's there?
Art Larson, the New York City Parks.
Rebecca Swaddick, New York City Parks.
John Kramer, Hudson River Foundation.
Tim Law, Hudson River Foundation.
Okay, any other conference rooms that want to introduce themselves?
Does it sound better now?
So Heather, we're getting a lot of noise out of that conference room. I think it's your conference room. I'm not 100% sure. I don't want to be accusatory if it's the wrong one, but I would just encourage everybody to mute everything that they can unless they're talking. We'll see if that solves the problem. Okay, let's keep going with introductions, please. Who's in Raybrook, please?
Nicole Balk, I'm in the Raybrook office with the New York ATDC and Fisheries.
Cool. Okay, okay, whatever somebody just did, just please do that. That has helped a lot with the loud background noise. Thank you. Okay, we have got a couple few people on the phone who I do not think have introduced themselves. Laura. Laurel. Anybody else on the phone who hasn't introduced themselves, please introduce themselves.
This is Ceta Crowns from DEC.
Roger Olson from Pride Unlimited.
Chase Chasky, DPS.
Sorry, Laurel. Marie Karpitsky, DOS.
And Mammurakli of DOS.
Steve Wilson's on two for CHPE.
Jen Laird White for CHPE.
Okay, anybody else who's not introduced themselves? Okay, that was maybe one of the most challenging introductions we've had as a committee. If we can get through that, we can get through anything. So thank you, everybody, for joining again. Again, this is sort of an interim meeting between our last formal meeting and our December meeting. I know that the Hudson River Foundation has spent a lot of time. Well, actually, I should call the order. I don't know, Matt, is there anything more official I need to do than that? For Heather?
Let's call it a order.
Okay, it's done. So this is really a, I know that John and Jim from Hudson River Foundation have spent a lot of time working with the various projects to refine the funding, funding streams, scope of the projects. And so really, this is going to be them leading this meeting. We do have a, an item we need to pass a motion on, which is the transfer of funds from the bank where the funds are currently sitting. It's, I think there's $2.5 million in that bank that's been transferred from CHP to the bank. It's been sitting there. We now need to transfer that money over to the Hudson River Foundation so that they can pay themselves and so that they can start to disperse that money out. So I believe we have a motion that has already been pre-written. Matt, do you mind reading that if you've got it handy, please?
Just give me a moment, please.
Thanks, Matt.
We could do it if you want, Matt.
That'd be great, Jim. Sure.
Yeah, go for it.
The proposed resolution, the environmental trust governance committee resolves to approve the transfer of $2.25 million from the trustee, as bank now in the tank, to the trust administrator in preparation for point four implementation of projects and reimbursement of trust administration fees.
So for those who, just a little more background on that, that is basically just a movement of funds from, from one bank to the Hudson River Foundation so that they can disperse it. It's not awarding money to any particular project. That's not what this is. So hopefully that is good background. Is there a second to this motion?
Somebody's got to move it first. I don't think HRF can move it.
Okay, yeah. Does anybody want to move that motion? Thanks, Matt.
Yeah, Heather, yes. Good afternoon, watching.
Is there any, I think, we go discussion next or we go second next? I'm sort of short-circuiting here.
Second.
Second? Is there a second?
City will second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this motion? Thank you.
I'm not.
Okay, all those in favor of passing this motion, say aye.
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 All those against?
Aye.
Somebody's against it? Okay.
That was just, that was just George being a clown. We're in favor here in New Paltz.
Okay, good, good. We need a little levity nowadays. We got it. Anybody abstain? Okay, the motion passes. So we can now move on to the next agenda item.
Let's just have a process point. So HRF folks, what do you physically need from us to take to the bank to effectuate this? The minutes sufficient or is there some document that the bank requires signed by somebody?
Yeah, thanks. We had a conversation with the VP, Lisa Stroke, earlier this week. They will need documentation in two ways. There's a, as we understand it, we have made a formal request to you. You will then, I'll need a letter on some form of letterhead. It can come by email to them approving the transfer of funds. We have a dedicated account already for it here in New York at Chase. And so once they get that formal letter, then they can affect the transfer as it gets a wire transfer. So if, if you'd like, I can, you know, send you that, Matt, and we can figure out next week how to make that happen.
Let's just need someone. Send it to me, Josh, and Heather, so we can figure out how best to do that. It might have to be signed by Josh as the chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have occasion to do this periodically with Chase, which is right next door to me, and I usually present them with an extract of the minutes.
Good. Yeah, Roger, it's, it's, it would be Mellon, right? Not Chase. John, we have to send it to Mellon.
And at the end of the month, I'm having dinner with the former chief financial officer of Mellon Trust.
Great.
Okay, Matt, thank you for that question and John, thanks for the answer. We'll work through those details next week. The executive committee of the HRF and get that formally transferred. Any other questions on that topic? Okay, great. Well, I'm going to thankfully push this over to Jim and John to kind of manage the next agenda item here. They've sent out a bunch of information. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. We have two hours for this meeting, so about an hour and 45. I, hopefully, that doesn't take the full hour 45, but we have it if we need it. So John, Jim, over to you guys.
Thanks very much. First, thank you all for making the effort to be with us on a Friday afternoon for this special meeting. We try, would like to be very efficient with your time today. Just a quick preamble to, for the discussions that we'll talk, we'll lead in. You know, remember that the purpose of this meeting is to continue our discussions of the case statements for that tier one priority projects that were reviewed in the September meeting in Albany. And I think we made great progress in that and got important feedback from you on the value of the projects and your insights on potential scope and budget changes or considerations. Since then, we have discussed options with, and especially focusing on not just scope, but also budgets to meet the budget constraints over the next five years with many of you. We want to thank the authors for their diligence in interacting with us. And we've not only done two things. We've revised the case statements and we have developed a budget. We'll talk about it a little bit later on. Given, and given the amount of work that was done in Albany, we want to focus this meeting on just brief discussions of what changed as the projects were revised. And reemphasize that those revisions that you've seen, that we've sent you a memo that discussed those in an overarching sense, plus the revised case statements. Those really reflect your input from September. And so in order to move this forward now, what we want to do is be sure that the budget for the five-year plan is discussed at this meeting in particular, since that's where we left off in September. So to think about the goals for us over the next hour and 45 minutes or less, as Josh has mentioned. When to consider the recommended projects, including the scopes, budgets, and timelines for each of them, with an emphasis on what was changed. And what we'll do is we'll work predominantly from the memo that we sent out to you and hopefully you've had a chance to see. We'll discuss how they contribute to the overall portfolio over the next five years. And then the goal is to affirm an initial list of projects that you as a committee agree are beneficial and meet the criteria to be included in the five-year implementation plan. And if there are any final changes the committee wants to make to the package as a whole or the priority projects. Ultimately, by the end of this meeting, we'd love to ask you to vote on a resolution that codifies your recommendation on what should be in the five-year implementation strategy. That resolution and the final project, our final package, sorry. That would include any revisions to the memo and case statements based on what you've told us today should be available to you to take to your executive level as required by your agencies and organizations prior to the December meeting, where our goal is to have a final vote on the five-year implementation plan. So we can talk about that resolution a little bit later, but are those goals clear to everybody as we move forward today? Okay, hearing none, I just want to again emphasize really what you're going to hear as we go through this step by step is the response. And I want to, again, really thank the people who are working on these case statements for their diligence in responding to your comments. And I think it's, there's been a really good alignment with these revised case statements and the projects that we're talking about now with, came out in the September meeting. So let me turn it over to Jim, and we're going to start to review the nine projects very briefly. And I'd ask you to refer to that memo that Jim sent out about a week ago.
Yeah, thanks, John. Actually, can you, I think, Matt, do you have the slides open? I just want to just step back and orient again. Make sure we're all on the same page for what we're trying to do through this process. So that you can go to the next slide. So this slide, which you saw before, was, you know, represents the initial take of an estimate for, for budgets and how we would allocate budgets across the five-year implementation plan. So this dates back to like pre-June level. And, you know, at that time, as you can see here, you know, we had all those bars in red representing deficits. So we couldn't implement, you know, all the projects as, as envisioned in June. Next slide. And so after that meeting in September, you know, the, we, we, you know, we did attempt to, or we were hopeful that in September we'd be able to do what we're doing today, which is talk a little bit more about all those projects and, and, you know, probably over optimistically, I was hoping we could sort of have a, you know, group discussion of each and, 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 you know, move to a consensus on which project to advance. Instead, the process was we, the foundation, you know, reached out to individual authors and members of those case statements and members who've had knowledge of them and, and just worked through, again, budget timelines and, and various scope modifications to try to reach the goal of being able to achieve, you know, all those projects with the available funds. And so depicted here on the left side are the projects. That middle is where we were in June. The red shows, you know, changes that, that if made would allow us to reach that $13.1 million goal. And next slide. And shown here, if we did that, you know, we would end up with a surplus or there would be unencumbered funds every year ranging from about $500,000 or $900,000 a year to, at the end of the project, a $1.4 million unencumbered fund. And we're calling here a contingency. And our recommendation is that some amount of money should be retained in a contingency to allow for changes that are likely to occur in terms of how we would, you know, what the actual budget expenditures would be. As you recall, you know, a lot of work has been done to develop these projects from the initial concepts into the case statements as they are now. But still, a lot more work is needed to get to, you know, fully implementable projects. And some of these projects have to go out, a lot of them will go out to bid. So depending on how those bids come back. So I just, you know, with, with that, I just maybe would take questions if everyone understands sort of where we are in this process. And as John said, our goal for the next maybe hour or so, hopefully shorter, would be to go through each of these, again, talking mostly about what will change from, from June through September to now in those projects to allow us to achieve the goal of, you know, having sufficient funds and momentum projects. Any questions on that?
Yeah, it's Matt. Just to confirm for the, for the record, I think I know the answer for this already. But so available funds for priority projects on this slide, that represents 75% of the total available funds, right?
Yeah, no, thanks, Matt. So, yeah, so for each year, you know, funded by the TDI on an annual basis. We receive funds, I think, late November, early December in 2022. And we're expected to receive additional funds at the end of this year, 23. So what's depicted here as 24 funds actually reflects those two years of funding, 2022 and 23. And then moving forward, every, you know, every year, there's, for the next three years, it'll be 3.125 into the fund. And then in 2028, there's this additional $7 million into the, into the fund. So of that total, 75% available to priority projects. And then there's minus the administration fee of 12 and a half percent. So that 14.5 is the total available for implementing priority projects over that five-year period.
Great. Thanks for the confirmation.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, great. So let's start with the focus area Hudson River. So this first project, case statement A, preferred habitat characteristics for migratory and resident arable and juvenile fish. Reference, reference conditions for habitat restoration. So this is a mapping of fish habitat and fish utilization of different habitat types. The, you know, in previous conversations, the governance committee saw the critical need for importance of this project and, you know, thought the funding was, was was necessary and the budget were, budgets were reasonable. So the recommendation that we're putting forward now is that the 1.25 million would go forward. So there were no changes that were suggested by the governance committee prior to this. And so our recommendation is it would go forward as depicted in this slide here. You know, about $50,000 a year for the next five years, or four years, I guess. So questions on that one?
Jim, I don't have a question, just more of a process thing. I think it would be helpful if people have questions or recommendations or comments to try to have them express them after we talk about the case statement. And maybe that's kind of obvious, but I think it'll be a challenge if we get to case statement G and then you say, hey, can we talk about case statement A again? Of course, if you, the question comes up later and you forgot to ask it, that's fine, but let's just try to work our way through these one at a time and then not go back to the extent we can. Is that, is that what you're thinking, Jim and John?
Yes, great. Thank you very much, Josh.
Okay.
I just have a question. The, I was happy to see that the study included the Harlem East River, but the budget didn't change. And I'm just wondering if you thought there might be efficiencies accomplished there? And that's why the budget didn't change? Or we're just going to approach that as we get to it?
Yeah, so Heather, great comment and question. You know, it was, it was suggested by the governance committee that perhaps, you know, insights could be transferred. I don't, and I apologize if I'm not reporting correctly, but I don't think the current case statement or the synopsis suggests that we did budget for that. So you know, I think the current budget reflects sort of the, you know, the freshwater title Hudson portion being the focus of this particular study with the idea that the information might be transferred. But as you suggest, if we are contemplating, you know, extending the study, we should probably think about, and, and we can do that as part of the discussion later, or we can do it now. But, and, you know, so my recollection, just try, sorry, to try to be a little clearer, is that I don't think this budget reflects the extension into the, you know, with the Brackish Hudson into Harlem and East Rivers.
Okay, so I guess that's something that we really, from our staff's point, would really make sure we continue to advocate for. Definitely nothing piece down in that area. There may be efficiencies. Maybe there's ways that that can be done in a way that is combined with the fresh river, freshwater areas and maybe Lake Champlain. So, you know, maybe, maybe a budget adjustment isn't necessary at this very moment, but maybe we need to just keep an eye out for that when creating the scope and putting out an RFP on it.
Heather, it's, it's great. I think it's a really good point. And I think one way to think about this is that, you know, presuming all these go through in the early stages, having the foundation coordinate a meeting to talk about how you achieve those efficiencies. Again, this is maybe part of contingency planning with some of those other funds. Just to think about how you can really create that, that overall view of habitat that is really going to be important for the entire state of New York, not just for, you know, individual pieces. So I think, I think we can definitely handle that and we would make that a priority to make that coordination meeting happen very, very early on in 2024.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else have questions on this first one? Okay, the second Hudson River project was restoration of adult and juvenile fish habitat in the upper Hudson River, Scodac Island side channel restoration. Or creation, I guess. So this project, as I just said, is creating a new connection between Mainstone Hudson to Skodak Creek. The connection will restore the hydraulic and sediment exchange between Mainstem and the creek, creating, you know, new shallow water habitat. The project will enhance six miles of the Skodak Creek. So it's entering at that sort of top end of the creek, improving more than 430 acres of habitat. The budget recommendation is for $3.7 million. The, about $500,000 is needed in the next, in the early stages next year to apply hydrodynamic and hydraulic modeling models to optimize the design of the channel. And the remaining 3.2 would be needed at the end of the, at the end of this five-year period, we're saying 2028. So, so the main change from, from the June till now is, is pushing the big expenditures for the actual construction of the project out to 2028. And it folks will recall that that's important because we have a large influx of money and. Hello?
I think the Jim and John are having some technical difficulties. Let's give them a second here.
Well, for the record, this is not our room. And apparently people call into it on some unknown phone. So.
I thought you guys were like doing a dance party there for a second.
Only after you pass the resolution.
Honestly, I think we're doing a pretty good job considering we're on a cell phone and a laptop in the middle of a broken and DPS conference room. So I, I'm sorry about that. So again, the, the big change was moving funds to the out years. This, there is additional funding, leveraged funds required to complete the project. So they are expected to be in place by, you know, 2027 or so. And so, you know, our recommendation is that, that the 3.7 is allocated in 2028, as I just said. So questions on that one?
No question and no objection from me. Just the observation that there may be funding sources additional to what we're talking about now that come into play. So I just want to say we probably need to remain nimble on this one, that this full infusion might not be necessary, but that won't become apparent for another year or so.
Okay, thanks for that, Matt.
Jim, one comment from John Lipscomb and George at Riverkeeper. We, we were actually up, the day we were going to take you, Jim, up to show that area, we ended up taking three people from parks. And we stressed again and again how the side channels need to be wide in order to fulfill their goal. And we showed, and we showed examples. So the placeholder here, we're going to continue working with parks. They were working the 1917 charts. We pushed them to the 1820 charts to show the actual channels that the Hudson maintained at the time before any of the, of the, of the re-channelization for the Port of Albany. So point I'm making here is that the big debate is this road that the Army Corps wants to use. A lot of the cost in the feasibility study is to make a road and bridges that are suitable for carrying bulldozers for the periodic use of the Holy Island spoil dump by the Corps. We're going to fight that like World War III because that's a waste of money here. The Corps can get their equipment to the land, to the spoil dump using the Port of Cleveland's, which is their contractor already. So the reduction in cost of the bridges, we hope will add to channel with funding for channel with. But the point we want to make here is that as the design goes forward, this final construction number may change up. That's it. Just want a placeholder.
Yeah, no, thanks for that, John. And I think this has already happened in these first two projects as we're discussing the budgets. It's, you know, sort of, you know, both what John and Matt pointed out, that these things are not set, you know, and I think for all these projects, we're going to have to remain somewhat nimble. I think, you know, great point, John, on sort of the need to do the best available design. I just would sort of flag that, that, you know, we do have money allocated, you know, next year to, to advance some of that modeling work, which I think will be really important to, to making sure that, you know, the points you just made, that, that we have sufficient with to make sure we're getting the flow and sediment exchange that are desired.
Yeah, and I think I just want to, Jim, can we make sure that when we go to the next phase, we make sure we include the fact that there's a feasibility study for Skodak Islands, which is a junction, it's a the fact that there's a feasibility study for Skodak Islands, which is a junction, it's a coordination from DEC and Parks? And the reason why I say that is because there's seven opportunities in that feasibility study. Um, as we have to be nimble, it may give us some flexibility to be nimble as the funding kind of changes over the next five years.
No, that's great. Just a flag from my notes, like, um, you're saying, like, in the case statement, we need to flesh out a little more detail on the, on the, the existing feasibility study?
Right, or just, yes, exactly. Um, because the way that it was read, a, a couple of people read it differently as to what project they thought this was going to be earmarked to. And I just want to make sure we make it clear that it's not really decided quite yet which actual project this is referencing, but it's referencing, uh, project opportunities in the feasibility study.
Yeah, great. I'll take that.
Uh, Jim, one last point about those channel cuts is we want to make sure that they're not constricted because any constriction would lead to, uh, rapid growth of water chestnut if not, if sufficient flow is not occurring into those backwater slough areas.
Right. Thanks, George. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna get to here before lunch. Um, okay, moving to New York City, um, C Harlem Murder, Design the Edge, poorly named project. It's really implementation of, uh, shoreline habitat and shallow water habitat restoration. Um, project would actually implement, uh, well, would do a detailed investigation of site conditions, analysis of restoration, challenges and opportunities, and, and really a lot of design work leading to, um, you know, the eventual project. Uh, so our proposed, um, budget is for, um, about 800,000 between 2020, 24, 2024 and 26 to do that, um, site investigation and design work, and then construction funding of 2.5 million, uh, proposed reallocation in 2027. And then following 2027, there'd be, um, an additional 150,000 for the post-construction monitoring work. And, and, you know, and the potential, I guess, would just to flag that, um, you know, there may need the, or maybe prudent to think about, um, additional monitoring happen at that site in the, um, in the next five-year implementation plan. So questions on designing the edge? And maybe just say, like, all, you know, like.
I got one question, Jim. In the, in the, the designing the edge, uh, is that case statement C?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, there's, uh, there's going to be, uh, uh, coring for contaminants. And the, you know, studies have shown a lot of these sediments are contaminated. And my concern is what happens when the sampling that we discover contaminants that would significantly jump the cost of, uh, of these projects? Will they, will they be remediated or what's the point if we know there's a lot of contamination? And the concern is what would happen next?
So I, I could let the Parks folks jump in, um, uh, but I, before I do, I'll, I'll just say two quick things that one is, you know, that, that's pretty, you know, you're getting into some of the detail specifics of what the investigations would be that frankly, I, I just think are, are ahead of what, um, we've got, have actually been decided here.
Okay.
But, but I also believe that, um, you know, based on prior experience I've had, that there is a need to do, um, some testing when you're handling materials, um, because, you know, changes sort of options for disposal and, and things like that. So, um, I don't know, Rebecca or anyone off some parks wants to just jump in to, to respond quickly?
Yeah, I can clarify. So for, when we do soil sampling, we have, we generally do several things in this instance. One is, um, more of like a geotechnical to see how soft the sediment is and if we need to add additional support for a structure like a shoreline. Um, if we are going to excavate and dispose of material, we definitely have to have soil contaminants to know what disposal sites that they have, that they can legally go to. Um, if we do not do that in design, the contractor will have to do that in construction. And that often, if that is a higher cost than anticipated, it can actually completely stall and run out a construction project. So it's better that we do it in design and actually plan for it. It certainly can impact the cost of a project, but we, you know, we kind of plan for a base level of contaminants and everything from, um, each time we cost these projects out. This is not something that's new, um, new to us. We've dealt with no contaminant sites to brownfield sites before. So this is not something that we're, um, not well-versed in. And then, um, following that, we also, um, A, the fact that we have to do it by law just for state materials management requirements, but, um, are increasingly required to do that, uh, sampling just to be able to inform worker health and safety, even if the site is contaminated or not, um, the, the individuals doing the construction have to understand what the contaminants are. Um, as far as whether or not they will be capped, um, we'll work with the state regulators to figure out what exactly needs to happen depending on the level of contamination. And if it's, you know, bad enough, um, the EPA, but generally levels of contamination would inform where we work or, or not. Um, in a lot of instances, if this is a living shoreline project and we're placing some sort of sediment on top of it, yes, they would be capped in that instance. The goal would though, making sure the site, um, that we're choosing to work is, um, more hospitable to aquatic organisms.
Thank you for that clarification, uh, Becca. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Sorry. Okay. All right, um, so moving on to, um, case statement D, development of design guidelines. Um, this is a modest project, 375,000 was initially requested, um, to basically develop a, a framework and classification scheme for, uh, um, primarily focusing on urban shores, shorelines and, um, initially focus on, um, mapping, uh, in the Harlem River. Um, but the idea is that the, 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 the design guidelines, um, uh, would be helpful for, um, you know, practitioners and resource managers, um, not just in the Harlem, but could be expanded to other areas. Um, so, um, small reductions from the 375 to the 300,000, um, just based on sort of some, some minor scope modifications and maybe just, you know, additional thinking about, um, what, what could be accomplished and when, um, the, uh, the, the project would start, um, um, not until 2026 and then go through 2027. So, yeah, and I should have said earlier that, um, you know, I have to, I'm happy to have the case data and authors jump in and, you know, correct anything I've said that's, that's incorrect, um, or just add more detail as, as necessary. So, um, you know, Becca, I think you, you were primary author on this. If you have anything additionist, uh, addition.
I think you covered it, but I'm happy to answer questions.
Great, thanks. So any questions?
Um, hey, Rebecca or Jim or both, I have a quick question. So when we talked about this in Albany, um, I believe there was a comment about whether, you know, this was filling a void that hadn't already been filled. Um, it sounds like there was other sort of guides that, uh, are maybe applicable in this area. So I'm just wondering, between that meeting and now, have you guys kind of looked at that to make sure that this is a gap that's unfilled?
Yes, we were, um, under, uh, the original intent was always that this filled a gap, um, and basically there, there's several things. So there's a lot of guidelines for, you know, living shorelines, for salt marsh restoration, for, um, you know, flood resiliency, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but there's nothing that really considers, um, this intensity of an urban condition. Um, and so that's one, one gap that would help to fill and also provide some, um, some additional consistency surrounding. Um, we also pushed it out, um, to try to follow some research that's starting right now in the policy realm um, for these types of projects, so it could further build off of that work.
Thank, thank you.
I'll just add that, um, the part of the policy run that Becca's referring to is the, you know, regulatory realm, and that's, um, particularly challenging for us in these really constrained urban environments where you're, you're tending to, um, the design is often leading towards fill in order to slope, uh, a channel more or to add structure and complexity into the shallow water. So that's, um, also something that would be key to have updated response that we respond to in the design guidelines.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to the Bronx River, aquatic connectivity, feasibility and alternatives. So this project is probably, um, it, it, the, the nine that, that probably changed the most, um, from until now, um, and that change really does reflect, uh, you know, what we heard from the governance committee, um, you know, in June and, and in September again. So, um, sort of, uh, I'll walk through changes, but I, I do want to let, let others, um, that, that really worked to, to make all changes. And again, that's, um, primarily the New York City Parks folks, Mark and Rebecca, um, to, to, you know, to fill in gaps and answer questions. But, um, you know, the original idea was that these funds would be used, um, as leverage funding, uh, as part of the core and, and New York City Parks projects to, um, to remove the, the two dams on, on the Bronx River, um, uh, the double dam and the stone mill. Uh, these dams are, um, above the, uh, the first, um, impediment, the Fish Passage, the 182nd Street Dam, where, um, you know, in 2015, the, the New York City Parks, um, had, had installed a fish ladder, um, and so concerns raised, um, well, by this committee and frankly, just conversations that have been ongoing, probably, you know, since that dam was, that fish ladder was constructed, um, or, uh, around, you know, are there feasible alternatives to removing that, that, that first impediment? Um, which is always better, you know, having no dam is always better than a fish ladder. Um, and so the change would be to actually study the feasibility of, uh, that removal. And so, um, it would not be, so the money would be for the feasibility. Um, but that, but that would cook that, um, that feasibility study would, would be conducted, um, alongside this, the Parks and, and Corps of Engineers, um, study investigating the, you know, as I said, the removal of those other two dams. So things like, you know, the hydrodynamics and hydraulic changes that are, that would be modeled and, and, um, and, and that are understood through those projects would help feed the feasibility study to remove the dam. So, um, for those reasons, were the ideas, we would, um, wait for those, that, that project to be complete and then, and begin the feasibility in earnest in 2028. And so the reduction of, of not le, using these to leverage funds for the removal of those two dams and focusing on a feasibility of removing, um, that first impediment, 182nd Street, um, resulted in a serious reduction in costs, um, I think 4.5 to, um, 750,000. Okay, and so, um, again, and Becca and, and Mark, if you want to. That I missed?
Yeah, this is George, I just want to, uh, thank, uh, Parks, uh, for this, uh, revised, uh, addition. You know, it, it's significant that first barrier and, you know, if there's any way we can assist with this feasibility study, I think, uh, we would be glad to help.
Great, thanks.
Thanks.
Was, was everything moved out into 2028 on the assumption that New York City and the Corps are going to be picking up all of the other costs in the first four years?
The, yeah, the, well, actually I'll let Becca answer the.
So the Corps project is ongoing for the second two barriers, so the second and third dams, um, on the Bronx River. Those are in, um, about to start, uh, design right now and are scheduled to be in construction uh, sometime late 2026, early 2027. And so once that project is completed or nearing completion, this would begin. So the Corps project is not necessarily directly associated with the 182nd Street Dam.
And there's no reason for this group with its funds to be involved in the earlier stages of it?
We, we personally would love that. Um, we don't know right at now at this time what, um, if any shortfall we will have with that project. Um, because we're, we're so early in design and there's just still some, so much unknown. Um, but if there is, uh, flexibility and interest, we would very much, um, welcome some additional support there.
Well, we've been very interested in all of them being taken out for a long time now. And a little disappointed to see this group's engagement being deferred for five years.
Well.
Especially if they're going to be ongoing projects with the upper barriers starting much earlier.
Well, we did, this is Marit, we did discuss, um, like Becca said, we're very, we'd be very interested in engagement. This, this, uh, modification to the scope was really in response, you know, to other strong voices in this group, you know, to Riverkeeper. And we, uh, would, we would certainly welcome the flexibility of being able to apply these funds. You know, like Becca said, if we fall, i- if we e- encounter a shortfall, but we're not, and we did sort of leave in the scope the fact that we, we will have these ongoing projects. Uh, I can't remember our final language on this that, um, might potentially have needs. I don't think we are opposed to adding, you know, to, to applying funding earlier if this group is willing to have that, you know, flexibility. But we do know that it doesn't, um, it doesn't make sense from our perspective to be looking back at feasibility of dam removal elsewhere before we complete, you know, these, um, the upper projects. So that's why, that's reflected in the schedule.
Well, I think Riverkeeper was the only one that really pushed hard on not getting involved earlier on their proposition that they're only interested at this point up and down the Hudson with, uh, addressing removals of the first barrier up from the Hudson. And for any number of reasons, Trout Unlimited is interested in getting involved in projects like this at an earlier level because it allows us the opportunity to, for example, bring our kids from trout in the classroom projects into the river to help with cleanups and, um, have educationals that teach the, the entire life cycle of the river and get them involved in conservation projects. And I'd really like to see this group have some involvement in that alongside the other people that are doing it. Um, so I, I just want to make sure I understand all the pieces from Parks. It, you know, there is, the trigger is going to be the design project on the Army Corps for the two upriver dams. Um, and that you'll have a sense of how much, um, flexibility is needed and, or the need for other funds beyond what the Army Corps and the city can provide. So is that, that's, is that correct, Mark and Rebecca? That, you know, that the driver is really unders, to understand as the design process moves forward in the early stages for the, for the other two dams. Is that right?
Correct. We don't know at this point. We're, we're really just starting to initiate design.
Okay, and, and then Roger, to your point, I, I think that, um, when we talked about this, I think at one of the meetings, that, um, you know, the, there, if there is interest in supporting education programs, that would, may very well fall under some of the other funds that are available in the trust. So I don't think there's any sense that there's an abandonment of wanting to be involved in a comprehensive look, uh, or, or those other projects. I, uh, just to put a finer point on the discussion, I, I think what Parks is recommending is, is essentially a comprehensive look at, at the removal of three dams over time and where Chuck can fit in on that.
Correct.
This is Alex from Sinek Hudson, and, um, we were sort of a little concerned with just the, the way this is framed. I mean, conceptually, Sinek Hudson strongly supports dam removal and restoration of fish migratory pathways and connecting people with nature and getting people outside and paddling. Um, but we wanted to make sure that the way this project. But we wanted to make sure that the way this project is scoped and framed is still being centered on sort of the nexus of impact of Chippy. And so, you know, when I see things like Objective Three is improving paddler safety on the Bronx River. How is that related to the impact of the Champlain Hudson Power Express project? And so, you know, we, again, it's not that we're against the project. But looking forward to the the life of the trust and the precedent that the trust is setting with how these funds are used. I think we need to be really clear in how this money is helping address the impacts of Chippy. So we just wanted to make sure, you know, feasibility project in the first five years. Maybe hopefully will lead to dam removal in the future. And we want to make sure that the the way these objectives are laid out again is is really centered on on the impact to the ecology of these water systems.
Thanks, Alex. I think Heather has her hand up.
I was just putting my hand up so you knew that somebody here at New Paul's had a point.
Okay, sorry.
No, 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 I'm lowering it right now.
Okay, any other comments on the dam removal?
So just to the nexus point, I just I'd observe that it's a the priority projects. I feel like have already been demonstrated to have a nexus just by the fact that they're in the the certificate conditions. So just my observation. Thanks.
And this is Jay with the city. I I first agree with what Matt said. That's our view of it as well. But I think whether it's this project or any of them, if there's desire to have the project description more clearly described. I mean, or at least for the case statements, they're all still at a very high level. But even at that high level, more clearly articulate in some way with the with that connection is. I think that's just a an editing issue that we can work on.
Yeah, no, I just I'll agree on the editing issue. There's a lot of work to be done, so we'll take that on.
What we're looking at here for this case for case statement E does not indicate any flexibility. And there's no reference to what we do with 182nd Street when. The other two are resolved, however they're resolved. But the other thing is in terms of the optics of what we do. The restoration of the Bronx River from what it had been. Is the kind of thing that can be written up and published broadly. As one of the great victories of bringing something back from being literally dead. The only things that were in it the first time I saw it were car chassis and tires and a few bodies. And what's, you know, what this foresees is is just optically in terms of. One of the most impoverished parts of the city in terms of New York City and the core. And I believe even the EC through Region Two is involved in some of this. I mean, I just think it's it's one of the places where we can promote ourselves in terms of a great win.
Thanks, Roger.
We have we have trout in the classroom stuff there where we have third graders who are learning the life cycle of trout in their classrooms. And every spring we take them up to Westchester County. Where the fingerlings that they have in their tanks that started out as eggs that the teachers just got last week. We go up to Ward Pound Ridge just to find a place to do the releases. And if we could do something to improve the quality of water in the city where we could actually do projects like that locally. Again, you know, I don't need to explain the optics to you of that.
This is John. Alex, I I just wanted a quick recap on what you said. What, you know, you talked about the nexus and Matt gave his thoughts on that. I just want to make sure that what I wrote down is scenic Hudson felt strongly that the project should impact the ecology of the water systems. Meaning that there's a there's a broad ecological benefit as you think about dam removal in the Bronx. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's fair. And, you know, again, the the point is about sort of the precedence that the trust is bedding and how these funds are used. And just making sure that to the public and to anybody that looks into what this trust is doing. That it's clear why monies are going where they are, you know, with relation to impacts of the project. So, you know, it's, I don't disagree with Roger's vision for the wrong server in any way. But, you know, being able to justify it again to the public, how is this related to Chippy, I think is important.
Right, okay, thank you very much.
This is George from Riverkeeper. I just want to say one more thing. You know, I I gotta say what parks is doing is extraordinary from, you know, within the past couple of years. Removal of the second, third, and looking at the the primary barrier is extraordinary. Three years ago, this was unheard of. The fact that they're removing two dams and now now looking at the primary barrier. We got to give parks the credit and for having the courage to do this. This is a major sea change. And, you know, if however they do it strategically to get that first barrier out, more power to them. And the first barrier is where, you know, is what we want. But we're also pleased that the second, third are coming out. And there's a fundamental, long-term goal for wide-scale restoration of the Bronx River, Roger. So we will, you know, yes, to your point, there is a long-term goal that we could talk about. That moves things well up into Westchester County. So this is a really good first step for the Bronx River.
And I think we should be in it from the beginning. And in terms of how is Chippy involved here? If memory serves, Chippy runs right across the South Bronx in the Queens.
I don't think so.
Doesn't it go across Westchester and the Bronx?
It's in it's in the water in Westchester and Bronx.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a question on the route, I can answer that. But it's in the the Hudson and then the Harlem. It goes on to the Harlem River Yards in the Bronx for about. A three quarters of a mile on land and then it transits over to Rattles Island. And then it's underneath the East River into Astoria.
No, I mean, so any final comments on this one? I think that like so the take home for me was maybe we could do a little. You know, clarity in writing could be improved to make sure that the the goals of the projects are understood. That, you know, I can apologize for the sort of the time, the timeline stuff is is challenging on this project than a lot of these. You know, because there's a lot of unknowns. But maybe just to respond really quickly to one of Roger's points that that we should be involved. You know, this is my personal opinion. I feel like the this this trust is involved. You know, we're doing important work. Our partners are working on, you know, part of this project. There's, you know, the feasibility is an important component. And there is opportunity for, you know, for funding and then, you know, to think about in the next five years. So, yeah, maybe I'll just end with that and thank everyone for the comments. Okay, the next project is the Wester Bed Development Restoration. The project would build on, you know, ongoing efforts in in the Tappan Zee, Hudson River, Harlem and Bronx areas. There's the project was envisioned as having three phases. The first phase was habitat survey and mapping of the specifically in the 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 lower Hudson. So like below the Tappan Zee area into the Harlem and East River Complex. The second phase was the pilot scale. So after that mapping, testing some some restoration techniques. And the performance of those various techniques. And then the third phase was a full scale restoration. So if folks recall at the last meeting, there were some concerns raised by by DEC. You know, advancing voice restoration work and waters that are not suitable for consumption. Which is all of New York City waters, frankly. And and also a concern raised by the city that, you know, the the nexus or the the. The project as originally envisioned was was thought about to be a specifically a Bronx River project in Soundview Park. And and perhaps was not a current priority of the city. So our initial recommendation in in the memo here is that we would advance just the first phase of this project. To do the the waste or habitat surveys and mapping. And open it up to questions, comments.
Jim, this is Jacob in City. Oh, thanks. Thanks for your explanation of the update. And so, you know, as you mentioned, the city at the last meeting said that we. Would support the project for funding under the non-priority bucket, but not the priority. Because at this time, it wasn't a priority for the city and we weren't involved with the development of this case thing. If that said, we'd be open to it as presented here if the project description more explicitly is tied to New York City. So, I mean, there can be split between what was originally contemplated in New York City. But we want language to show that there definitely will be activity in Phase One and Phase Two. In the waters around New York City as opposed to focused up near the Tappan Zee. And I think that I I think that the the language in the updated case statement memory provided. Suggested it could be in New York City, but it's just still too vague. That's why we'd like to see something more specific saying that there will be work in New York City in Phases One and Two. And and if that basically our our support for the project in this five-year budget plan would be contingent on those changes.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Other comments?
I would just say that the department was happy to see that we're really just funding Phase One of this one. So that was really to guide us in future habitat pilot projects and implementation. So, you know, I definitely support those language updates. And if you need help with that case statement update, reach out to myself and and Dan and the Hudson, we can maybe help with that. But, yeah, we were happy to see that it was limiting to Phase One.
Great, thanks, Heather. Anyone else? Okay, so.
Sorry, Jim, that this is, sorry, I just wanted to add that I think it's really important when we're talking about survey and data collection. In some of the same areas that there that we look carefully at the overlap. In site and potentially work and coordinate. If, for example, we're looking at the Harlem River that we just, as with that we just share. Information about scope and techniques and data collection so that there's it's all, these are all complimentary efforts if they're in the same geographic location.
Yeah, great point. And, you know, I sort of just recognize that we definitely can do a better job as we describe all of these case statements. To to make sure we call out those connections to the others. Because I think, as you're suggesting, there is a lot of overlap here. And, you know, so I'll just take that as as a to-do and we'll we'll strive to do that. Okay, anyone else on oysters? Okay, moving on to Lake Champlain. The the project is the aquatic invasive species prevention and management. Let's remember there are four primary objectives of the project. Objective one was an AIS invasive species early detection monitoring system for Lake Champlain. Second phases or component is an economic impact of AIS to Lake Champlain. The third was the development and implementation of a study to evaluate AIS transport through the Shambly Canal. And the fourth was to design and complete permitting requirements for an electrical deterrent system on the Champlain Canal, specifically at Lock Eight. And so this kind of this this falls in the ballpark like the Bronx River one where there's quite a bit of work. That that went into thinking about how this this should be implemented. I think Heather pointed out at the at the last meeting that there are a lot of moving parts in the AIS. Sort of, you know, decision process, there's a lot of players, the core canal corp, the DEC certainly and others. So, you know, under being sure that we understand all those 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 various players and and how these funds can best be utilized. And I guess my hope, you know, is that that this case statement sort of captures that that some of those challenges. And 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 perhaps you can see that in in how much it's changed. So the through that process, we the original case statement called for. The removal at at both the Champlain and at Glen Falls. This current iteration sort of is only focused on the Champlain. There is the potential for still to move forward under other funding. But but it's sort of the complication here and maybe the confusion if you don't have it might be that, you know, in our original timeline and budget. We, because we're only looking at these this first five-year period, the budget was actually less than than is proposed here. But if you looked at the whole project, it would it would have been larger. So, you know, the construction is is proposed for implementation of that AIS barrier barrier in 2027. Is that correct? Twenty-six, actually, sorry, 2026. And and again, we're not looking, the the current proposal is not looking for funds to do that that second component in Glen Falls. So maybe just step back for one one minute that that I think in in from the the meeting in September, there was sort of support for. Those first three phases of the project. And 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 they're relatively inexpensive. They're about $600,000 total. And then, but with the addition of the actual implementation of this this temporary barrier, the electrical current barrier. You know, be another 1.4. So in total, about $2 million on the on the project. And so, yeah, that's our recommendation as as currently proposed is for $2 million. So I'll open up the questions. I see your hand up. Go ahead, John. I think that's John.
No, that was just my Italian inner self waving my hands.
Were you clapping or?
No, I was emphasizing.
Okay, sorry, sorry. So anyone, any comments, questions on this? And Nicole, you're anywhere, anyone else that contributed to the to the update? Please jump in if you want to clarify anything I've said.
This is Dan Kelleher from APA. We've we had some staff transitions on back. I think Jim Pinero left. What we've bounced this around a little bit in-house. And the only question that's come up is, is there a strong need for this economic impact analysis? Is someone running around saying AIS isn't important? So that's the only place where we had some questions internally.
So I could just respond to like, because that came up last the last meeting as well. Hey, well, first, welcome back, Dan. And so I did dig around a little. I talked to Meg Modley from the Basin Commission and and she again sort of emphasized the need there. And 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 sort of and suggested that while there had been other components of of. The economic impact assessments through, you know, the feasibility studies at the core and the canal corp are undertaking currently and other projects. There wasn't one like concise document that sort of captured for the whole lake. So, you know, I can only sort of speak for what her response was, but, you know, happy to hear other comments.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we didn't have strong pushback, but it just seems a little.
Okay. I mean, it's a relative in the overall scheme of things, it's a small budget item. But but so in this rewrite, I'll I'll just also I'll do one more round with with. You know, folks in the call, you can help me just maybe refine for the justification and clarity on the need for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, next project, academic research focused on Lake Champlain fish. Um, so this project is a data collection and analysis of, um, fish habitat areas. So kind of similar to what we heard about in the Hudson, um, again, trying to couple that sort of, um, fish habitat data with how, um, key species um, and, um, in Champlain, important, uh, sport fish species, uh, as well as species of greatest conservation need um, are, are utilizing these, these areas. So, um, a component of the project will expand this, um, existing acoustic telemetry array. So this is like where you track fish, um, into the southern portion of the lake. Um, I think there are only one or, or maybe there are no, um, existing, um, receivers in, in the, in the southern lake, but there, you know, there is a network that exists in the, in the main lake. Um, so, um, components of the projects will, um, that, of this fish monitoring, monitoring, um, and, and assessments will also, um, help, uh, sort of understand the invasive species species introductions, um, and, um, and, and provide a look at sort of, um, A I S range expansions. So the recommendation is for nine hundred fifty thousand dollars to be allocated to, to this research and monitoring project. Um, there is, um, significant reduction in scope from the last time you guys saw it. Uh, there was a component of, um, purchasing, um, a, a large equipment piece, a wave glider, um, in discussions with the authors and, and the, the fish research community, uh, that, that, that expenses removed, um, resulting in that, you know, around a thousand dollar savings. So, um, our proposal is nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for this project and open it up for questions. Okay, um, the, the final project, uh, for today to discuss is Lake Champlain fish population assessments. Again, um, this is a data collection and analysis project to develop, uh, abundance indices, um, for important, uh, fish species in Lake Champlain, um, to better understand their distributions and, um, and population numbers. Um, the, um, the focus would be the, um, the, this next three years, so twenty twenty-four. Well, I wrote two years, three, but two or three years, I'll say, um, before the construction and, uh, I mean, before the, uh, the cable is, um, turned on for electrification and then, um, for, um, one, one year post, um, electrification. So, um, this one also changed significantly from the last time we saw it in September. Um, it was, uh, change in focus and, uh, a re- reduction in scope. Um, and so reflects, uh, a point four million dollar change from, from the original proposal. And, uh, open it up for questions. Okay. Wow, congratulations. We made it through.
Not so fast. Got one question. Hold on, hold on there. Um, got a question on, you know, maybe just to ask you guys on when you're assessing the fish populations. Uh, if your catchability for any real accurate, uh, fish population assessments, if you don't calibrate your catchability, then your C P U E and all your assessments of fish populations could be biased. So, the, so I'm wondering that I hope that they would in use some form of testing their catchability. This way they would know their metrics, uh, of their methods. Then they can assess based on, then, then becomes a model of the fish populations once you've determined your catchability first.
Yeah, thanks, George, for that. Um, I, I don't have a response because I don't actually know the details around sort of how they would design the surveys and it's, it's currently not. Um, you know, there's not a lot of detail in this case statement as, as in other projects. Um, I, I would just sort of flag that.
I, I, the only reason why I say that is, it's an important detail that is often left out of any, uh, sampling surveys. And, but in a closed system, fit relatively closed system, it's easier than, say, a river. But catchability is really important whenever you want to use any calculations of your assessments and of the model population.
Right.
And, you know, again, based on the, 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 the old assumption that all models are wrong, but some are better than others.
It's all models are wrong, some are useful. That's what I would.
Yeah, something like that, something like that.
Yeah, no, that's great. I mean, I appreciate that. Um, and again, I just, you know, I'm, I'm not a fish scientist, but, you know, that, that makes sense to me either, you know, explaining it. Um, well, I think similar to other, uh, of these case statements, we can, we can strive to add some of those details in here and, and I know before we would fund the project, right? Um, that those details will have to be there and, and certainly there'll be, you know, again, this goes not just for this project, but across all these projects. You know, there will be opportunities and, and I'm hopeful that, you know, this committee will ma- remain engaged and help us, you know, refine and, and and make these proposals, uh, and projects, um, you know, successful.
Thank you, Jim.
So Jim, I just had one thing. I, I think I raised this last time we talked about it, but I'm, I'm still kind of hearing the same language, which is fine. I mean, I'm sure by the time the details are sorted out that, that this, um, assessment will be kind of scientifically rigorous, but when I hear kind of pre-installation and post-installation and how do fish populations change? That, you know, that is really simplifying a super complex, um, scientific question, right? As we talked about last time, there could be a hundred thousand different reasons why fish populations have changed. Um, so what, what I, as a sort of representing C H P, I just want to be really careful here that, you know, this doesn't become a research paper that's making statements, you know, about C H P E and and again, I'm sure and the details are sorted out, it'll be academically rigorous, et cetera, et cetera. But I just think it's important to, to note that.
Yeah, no, thanks, Josh. Um, yeah, I, you know, I honestly, I think the, the language around that was was, was, and Nicole, you could jump in and be like, um, was, was really driven by sort of trying to make that nexus to the cable connection. Because the, at least the conversations I've had with, you know, and, and how I understood the sort of the assessment, as you suggest, it's, you know, it's lakewide and, and, you know, even the southern lake is pretty big area, right? So it's really about, you know, population across the entire river. And so, you know, not a steady focus on, you know, cable impacts. So, um, we can clean up the language there as, as in some other examples and, um, and, you know, you'll have another opportunity to, to respond.
Thank you.
Okay, so the, the next step in this, and I, and I want to make sure we, we follow the will of the committee. Um, we mentioned, or I mentioned earlier on this notion of a, a resolution, but I want to make sure that um, you have the chance to, uh, we've been scribbling notes here, um, vigorously throughout this discussion. Um, want to do just a quick synopsis. And then we'll give you the option of, uh, uh, affirming these as a portfolio. Or you can vote on them. Um, you know, we can split the resolution into one by one, but I, I think based on what we've heard so far, um, there are some modifications, but you've, you've begun down this path to actually affirming the portfolio. So let me, let me just give you some high-level overviews of what I heard over the course of this last forty-five minutes or so. And then we'll go on to discuss how you want to do the resolution. So for the first project, um, which was
Habitat.
Habitat in the Hudson, um, generally quite supportive of this, but, um, a real note that this is, and there's a great opportunity to develop a coordinated approach across all three regions to understanding fish habitat. And it's would potentially, and I think more than potentially fall on us, the trust administrator, to put a vehicle together. So there's consistent sharing of both data, methodology and outcomes of that kind of work. So, uh, the design and, uh, for the Skodak Island project, um, there was, it was seen as very high value, but it's, a lot of this is going to fall into that was actually designed. And there's a number of issues that relating to the Army Corps Road as well as the potential channel. Most of that will be worked out during the feasibility study, which could include a variety of other options, as Heather has mentioned. So that there would be need for a clear input, um, from others in a, in a broad context as that went forward. Um, with respect to the third one, the Design the Edge project, there was in, in general support for that with the caveat around challenges with contaminated sediments there. And I, I think the response to that was that there was a clear understanding of the challenges of working in this highly urbanized environment. And, uh, the city is, and parks are very focused on not just knowing what's in the sediments, uh, with respect to what the cores might find, but how you would actually deal with those sentiments later on within both an environmental, legal and regulatory context. For the fourth project, the small one, um, there was, the, this is about the design guidelines and the question that was raised there had to do with, is this novel and new and is it needed? And the response there was that in the broad context of the guidelines that have already been developed, that this is a, a really an interesting and important case because it is such a highly urbanized area. And then it was the important point that ongoing discussions around regulations and the challenges of regulations and modifying environments is going to be informative to those guideline settings as well. So that, that seemed to handle that issue. We had a long conversation about the three dams on the Bronx River. I think there was an affirmation that this is, there's great value in, in moving towards uh, opening up the Bronx River. On the other hand, there's also need to be cognizant of making the connection to the Champlain Hudson Trust. And its mission is important, uh, with particular emphasis on achieving ecological outcomes. Uh, but again, there was very high support for this as a comprehensive look at dam removal in that system. The Oyster Project, which is now focused on Phase One, um, there, again, there was support for that, but the city would like to see language in a slight modification to that to ensure that, that the Phase One, potentially Phase Two, if that got implemented, would cover parts of, of the city. Um, but to make sure that, um, that it, it would be an expansion of Phase One to, to look at various aspects in city waters. Um, and then there was another key piece in this, which is to echo what I said at the very beginning, to make sure data collection and the data that is, um, is available is shared widely. So this is in the same context of making sure that there's this, there's a comprehensive approach across all this first five-year implementation and data is collected to share a- amongst the different regions. Uh, the Lake Champlain, uh, first one on A I S, again, strong support with respect to the general mission of this, but, uh, needing further justification for the economic analysis. And to, to make sure that that's robust, it's comprehensive and it, it really is synthetic across and to yield a product that gives a real clear emphasis on what economic impacts are of A I S in the Lake Champlain system. Uh, for, let's see, let me just stick with the notes so I get the titles right. Academic research. There was, uh, generally support for that as it's, it's a modified project now and if it's a modified scope. And then finally, the last one, Lake Champlain Fish Population Assessments. Um, actually, let me just step back. As, uh, I want to emphasize for the Lake Champlain Habitat, Fish Habitat Assessment, there's again, a real need to coordinate data collection and shared methodologies as needed across the entire New York State system that, the cable will touch. And just to understand these systems in a bit, uh, essentially arguing for a broader impact of that overall. And then finally, for the last one, Lake Champlain Fish Population Assessments, again, um, strong support with known modifications. However, a, a note that as this moves into implementation phase, to make sure that there's methods validation to actually, uh, enhance the, the strength of the modeling of population assessments. So that's, that's a quick overview. Anything that you think I missed in there?
Hey, Jonathan, this is Jay.
Yeah.
Just one comment, you know, appreciate your, you know, capturing our feedback on the Oyster Project. The request is just to be clear that, um, edits made tying part of the project to New York City, um, specifically say Phase One and Phase Two. I understand funding now is probably limited to Phase One, but just rather have the description, um, reflect those edits. Assuming that more money potentially would come in later, rather have the description changed now than worry about later.
Thanks, Jay. I, I will definitely make sure we do that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Anyone else? Anything I missed in there?
Okay, he- here it gone. The proposal would be for you to consider, um, affirming these as a portfolio. Um, pending, uh, a couple modifications. Um, particularly the Oyster Project and the economic valuation of, of A I S. We'll go through again to make sure that we haven't missed anything else in there. Uh, also this notion of overarching coordination of fish habitat work across the entire systems. So if that, we would then produce a, a new memo for you, um, and then continue to work on the built-out case statements. Um, what I want to make sure before we go to the resolution is, um, you know, the purpose of this meeting is, is not just to affirm here, but to empower you in the best possible way to seek, uh, to seek input from your executives. Is the memo enough for you? A modified memo enough to take to your executive branches? Or do you need something else from us?
I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, um, we had a, we have to, to go up to executive. Um, and I know we have a quick turnaround as far as like when the official vote comes in. I'm curious on how long do you think it will take to go from today's meeting to the edits that you talked about?
It, it, Heather, it'll depend on if, if it's the memo itself, the short memo that, that, we'll have that for you by
Next week.
Next week.
Okay.
Is that enough? And I, that's my question is, is that memo enough to take to executive branches? Or do you need to full-blown case statements?
Yeah, that's why I'm asking the question. Um, the memo to put turnaround the alternative with the other format that you were thinking might have to be?
Wait, just to clarify, I think, um, maybe John and I aren't on the same page. Uh, I think we can get an updated, you know, memo, which is the four, which includes the attachment A, as I've sent it around this morning of the updated case statements based on what we've heard today. So it's that whole sixty-page document with likely no one reading the, the appendix part, you know, any executive level anyway. Um, and, and I would ruin my weekend, next weekend or this weekend by saying, we can do that by next week. So if Fri- I'll say Friday, we'd have the updated full package, including the appendix with all the updated case statements.
So November tenth.
But. Okay.
Uh, and Friday is, I believe, a holiday, right?
It is.
Yeah. So no one would be able, we would probably circulate that. Um, Wednesday or December meeting, is that scheduled?
Oh, well, okay.
The sixth.
Okay. We, we can get you the memo by Thursday, the night.
Uh, this is Sita. Uh, it's, it is, we have a lot of exec, uh, uh, for those that may not be familiar with how our executive works, we have multiple deputy commissioners overseeing different program areas and we have, you know, I think it's at least four deputy commissioners plus our executive deputy commissioner that are all going to need to review this. So I want to give them as much time. I've given them a heads up, uh, you know, that this is coming and that we're going to need, you know, kind of the okay to proceed. Um, I would suggest that we get them whatever we can as soon as we can. Um, and if they need more, we can also, you know, deal with it if they do. I, I don't see that they would need more than what you guys are discussing right now. So I'd rather get something before, than later.
But is, does that mean like, like go home now and send you what I can or does it mean?
No, 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 no. What, what you're proposing for next week is fine. Listen, next Friday's fine. Even if you send it to me on Thursday, we're going to send it around and probably no one's going to look at it till Monday. But if I get it on Friday, I will, we'll make sure and I'll send it around to everybody for Monday morning. Um, I think that should be sufficient, what you're proposing, uh, for, for our executive. Um, and then, you know, if there's follow-ups, we'll go from there.
Right.
And hey, Sita, just, and for the other saying, she said, I think Friday's a, a past day holiday, not necessarily a holiday, so. It's like a, a floater for
Yeah, okay.
All intents and purposes.
We'll have it to you by the ninth.
Can I ask a separate slightly different question? The portfolio approach, I guess what you're saying there, John, is you vote for all or nothing? Is that right?
No, I I I'm giving, I, so so the res- again, the resolution here is, I'll give you some sense of what the res would be. But you have, you can choose either of these approaches, one by one. And we can actually say if there's, if if there's strong consensus that you want to vote one by one, we can do that. Or we can, I'm just looking at. Okay, so here's, let me, let me just stop in this. So this would be, this would be based on what we've heard so far, Josh. Here's a potential resolution. The Governance Committee resolves to confirm that the portfolio of priority projects discussed meet the criteria to be included in the, yeah, the Champlain Hudson Environmental Trust Five Year Implementation Plan. That's a portfolio approach. Another approach is we could say we're going to take each one, one by one, and have a recorded vote on that. You're not voting to approve this. This can't happen until your executives agree. I think what we're asking for here, and you can decide not to do this. It's a statement that the Governance Committee has affirmed that these meet the criteria and are implementable.
Just, just trying to understand, why do you feel like, and and I'm not arguing or saying it's a bad idea. Why do you think an affirmation today is a helpful thing?
I I I think it, it shows the will of a of a of a unified committee.
Okay.
It places in my, in my mind, as someone, you know, facilitating this with Jim, it says, we've worked together as a group, we've crossed agencies, we're saying across the board. And and maybe that doesn't matter for your administrators. I I think this is a decision you have to make as a committee. But I think affirming that you have worked together, you feel good about this as a portfolio is a message that you're functioning well.
I guess I would just say, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, looking at the clock, you guys got through this quick. I'd like to get some quick feedback from the voters on the call as to do they think an affirmation statement today is helpful? But can they even make it? And then second, should we look, be looking for a portfolio vote? Or a project by project vote for the December, I think it's sixth meeting? Can we just quickly go around and get some feedback on that, please?
I'd like, before we do that, I just want to clarify on the December vote, what exactly that vote is supposed to be? That's to move these forward for further case statement development. Is that correct?
Based on what we talked about September, the December vote would say the implementation plan moves forward into actually funding the first phase of each of these projects in year in twenty twenty four. So there would be, the trust administrator would then work with those who have to clarify the case statements to actually develop RFPs as needed to look at who gets hired, things like that. It's actually to spend money starting in twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Okay. So so Josh's question is, the value, one, should you, is there any value at all in affirming this affirmation as a resolution? Two, if there is value as a portfolio or as separate project by project?
You know, I was Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead, Matt. Go ahead.
Yep, sure. So I was going to say, I I don't think it's necessary, but I don't object to it. And I prefer for a December vote, I think the an approach where we vote on all then together as a pro- as a profile rather than individually would be beneficial.
Yeah, I guess I would echo what Matt said, a portfolio approach to me is the preferred approach. And then as far as affirmation, I think it'll be difficult for us as a state agency to do that. But it may be beneficial to hear that the other, you know, partners and parties are interested in this this package as a portfolio. But I guess from my point of view, both from Seda, myself and many other state representatives, that the portfolio I presented today is something that, you know, we certainly going to move up to executive and and look for their to vote to vote towards. So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if we can do anything officially.
Okay.
Other comments, city, DPS, APA, Sina Hudson, Riverkeeper? Love to hear your opinion here.
EPA is happy to bring these to our executive.
Do you like the portfolio? Do you like vote, project by project vote?
We would, we're happy to do it as a portfolio.
Okay, what about the affirmation today? Do you care?
I think we're affirming that we're, we're happy to bring this and recommend it to our executive team, they vote in the future.
We're sort of affirming it right now in this conversation, John, so we might be killing two birds with one stone right now.
Okay. I I I'm not going to fall on my sword on this one. I I again, I I think part of the message is we think you as a committee have done a lot of work. I I recognize the constraints of of how you have to work in your environment. But I I want to make sure you have some credit for working hard on this. And that affirmation is partly where I'm going. If that's not needed, that's fine. Let's, let's just stop.
Being recorded in the notes, so it's it's sort of happening naturally right now. Anybody else want to?
Yeah, Riverkeeper, Riverkeeper agrees that since a number of parties have said that in December, they're willing to vote on a portfolio, that in effect is affirmation that no more negotiation is needed. If we were hearing that we were going to vote separately on issues, then we should vote separately now. Riverkeeper, I believe, is happy with a portfolio vote. We're happy with the modifications that have taken place to bring us to today. And therefore, we're happy with the portfolio vote in December. And as far as we're concerned, that's the only affirmation needed.
Speaking for the city, I think we're, just to echo what everyone else said. We don't think of an actual vote on a resolution today is necessary. We don't object to it if we want to have it, although I agree with the other comments that the discussion you're having now effectively gives you, I think, the same thing. For the vote in December, we agree with the portfolio approach. And we would recommend to, you know, those who need approval from that the portfolio as it will be updated based on discussion today should be city should.
Okay, the 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 more, the idea of a resolution is formally withdrawn by the trust administrator.
I think you can make a motion to withdraw without being committed.
Yeah, I can be, the idea, I've, I've, I've walked away from that entirely. Thank you. Any other, I I want to ask if I can start to talk a little bit about the December meeting, Josh?
Yeah, I think we've got pretty good consensus here. We'll go with the portfolio vote. We're not going to, we don't need to do an affirmation today. And then the soonest you guys can get the materials revised and sent to everybody, the better, understanding it's going to take a little time. Is everybody okay with that summary? Okay, great. Yep.
So the one other piece I'd like to ask to have on the agenda in December is that the foundation will come up with a couple of options for the twenty five percent money that we've been discussing. I think we need to get that on the table. I know Matt was concerned about that at one of the previous meetings. So we'll give a couple of ideas about potential RFPs and thinking about that as well. Okay?
But there will be no voting on that, right? That's just be more of an FYI at that point?
Yeah, sharing information on that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, on on that, on that, John, we want to make sure that we welcome the list that you're going to bring in December. We want to make sure that that list isn't considered a finite list. For the twenty five percent.
Yeah, I don't think we will bring a list. We will talk about mechanisms, not a list of of projects.
I misunderstood. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is Nicole. I have a question for the December meeting. Who exactly is attending? Is it just people who are allowed to vote or do you want all of us to show up?
I think, Nicole, that really, I think, and and Heather, Matt held me out here, but I think the December meeting is really, we've done all the work in the, in this meeting and the one in September. The December meeting is really about a vote, maybe an update on the project, kind of a normal agenda. A vote, we're going to get a little bit of a preview as to how the twenty five percent non priority funding, what that might look for, the process going forward. But I think, I I think I would ask every, every representative of this committee to have at least one person who can vote on behalf of their organization at that meeting. And maybe that's all you need. But please make sure you have somebody who has the authority to make the vote on that call. Does that answer the question, Nicole?
Agreed. And that that should be in person or at a publicly accessible location that you'd let me know about so we can put in the agenda. That said, again, these are all public meetings, so anyone is free to attend.
Thank you, Matt.
Just to confirm that is on December sixth still? Is that right?
Yes, one thirty.
Thank you.
So I I have to be I don't have a meeting in, like, would it be possible to get one sent out shortly, just so it's, the time is officially blocked off?
December sixth?
December sixth.
Okay, so John, Jim, any other business related to that agenda item? I think we've worked through it, but anything else important we should cover?
I I I think we're, we're done with our portion. I just wanted to say how thankful we are for your continuing engagement on this. Particularly those who we're, where we work with, Jim worked tirelessly with folks at all of your staff and folks in the room. So thank you very much. We were excited to see this move forward. I know we're not a hundred percent there yet, but we're very, very close. So thank you very much.
Well, likewise, John and Jim, obviously, we're just showing up and 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 listening to things. I know people are working in the background. So yes, thank you to you and your organization, your, you know, everything you guys have done to get us here. A year ago is kind of hard to imagine we'd actually be taking a vote on these projects because things were so amorphous. So you guys have done an incredible amount of work to kind of harness this energy and get it into fundable projects. So thank you guys so much. It's a pretty exciting day or will be in December. So just kind of one other agenda item I want to bring up or item I want to bring up is I think that there might be a press release that this organization or your organizations might be interested in. It's a pretty big deal allocating this amount of money. I don't know if people have thought about it, if they care about it, but it seems to me an appropriate thing. And that would obviously require coordination across all these organizations. Does anybody have any sort of input on on that piece?
Josh, just from a state agency's perspective, we'll each need to, you know, go to the highest level and get those approved. So there'll be a turnaround time as you prepare it.
Yeah, and I I mean, that's something that DEC will include when we are, you know, we circulate this memo with our recommendations. But I think we would probably prioritize a focus on actually reviewing the projects to get everybody okay for the vote. And then, you know, hopefully can coordinate the press release at the same time. But we would definitely need that to have the executive sign off and then it would go through our press office.
Okay, any, thank you, Seda. Thanks, Dan. Anything else on that? What I, you know, for CHP, it's, it's not that important. It just does seem like a important thing. And I think it would also show sort of the unification to the public about from this, this committee. So what I'll do is I'll ask Jen Laird White, who had to leave, to reach out to some of your organizations to see if this is something we can pull off. If it's too cumbersome and too challenging, maybe we just, we don't, we don't do it and just put a simple statement somewhere. So we'll, we'll take a stab at that. And again, it may be too difficult to pull off in a month, so.
Yeah, there there may be some options for us as trust administrator to participate, certainly participate in that. But I want, again, we want to respect any constraints that any of the state agencies have on this. So we will work with you as well to be sure that we are well aligned with those constraints.
And and we, the the priority is the vote, not press releases for sure. So that's where we should focus our time.
Right, I think that's correct.
The city also would be happy to participate. We just would need a time, time to review it and discuss it internally before it's actually placed.
Okay. Yeah, definitely. We wouldn't do anything without everybody's buy-in for sure. Okay, so I mean, just to recap you, I think we kind of did this, but we've gone through the the projects. HRF is going to revise the information we got today, send it out hopefully by Thursday. And we just ask everybody who's got to get executive approval to get that in advance of the December sixth meeting. The December sixth meeting is the big thing, will be voting. So everybody will need to be in one of the notice facilities to make your vote count. And then we'll probably just have sort of our normal agenda on that December sixth meeting. So that I think is the recap. Is there anything else important I missed there? Okay, any other topics people want to bring up that can't be covered in December? Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
City moves.
Second?
Give me a second.
All those in, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anybody want to hang out on this call for another couple hours or can we adjourn?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Much, folks. Meeting is adjourned. All right, thank you. Bye.